Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. Welcome to the Holyoke School Committee for Monday, May 18th, 6:00 PM via Zoom. I was gonna, the meeting will start now at 6:12. So let's have roll call.
I can do a roll if you want, Mildred. Mayor Morris. Mrs. Brunel.
Sorry, I was muted here.
Mr. Sheehan is here. Ms. LaFave.
Oh, present, sorry.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Present.
Mrs. Burks.
Present.
Ms. Feliciano-Sims.
Present.
Mr. Wallahan.
Here.
Mr. Colomore.
He's in.
Mr. Krishane.
Present.
Mr. Colomore is here, I can see him.
I guess that's all set, so, um, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You are all muted. But I know you are saying it spiritually.
And I forgot to call Charlotte in the roll.
Oh, that's, that's right. Welcome, Charlotte. So just wanna first announce a few things before we go ahead and start with the meeting. Pursuing to master general laws, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. And if I'm not mistaken, we're as well on Facebook in Spanish interpretation. Am I mistaken, Doctors Wright, or is that still hold true?
Liz, do you know the answer to that?
I'm sorry, because I didn't hear the question. I was doing something else. Go ahead, Mildred.
Are we still also being on, live on Facebook in Spanish interpretation for this meeting?
No, ma'am, we are not for this particular meeting.
Okay, so it's only on the city's community TV channel?
And BoxCast.
And BoxCast. So just before we start real quickly, I know that, um, the past few meetings, I've gone around and asked everybody, you know, if they have any questions or comments. I'm not gonna be doing that this time. Um, those that are on video, um, that I can actually see you, if you can just go to the participant screen, um, down at the bottom on the left-hand side, there's a raise hand. So if at any time you have a question or a comment, um, please use the raise hand option. And obviously, we'll see it, and when it's a good time to stop and ask the question, you will be asked to go ahead and ask your question. Those that are on the phone, though, I will go through each of your names, um, because I can't visually see you and that you, I don't think you have the option that I can see, um, for you to raise your hand, so I will directly ask you. So, Mr. Colomore, and Ms. Tensley-Williams. For you guys, I'll be asking. Also, I wanna remind everybody, do not use the chat room or send any messages through the chat box. And that's it for this evening. Um, I think the meeting can run smoothly, as long as we all follow, follow that process. Alright, so Ms., um, Dr. Strike?
Good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody here. Uh, we have a number of guests tonight. We have the, uh, the entirety of the Holyoke Public Schools Cabinet is here, really to answer any questions that might arise during the budget presentation. Um, but we're gonna start tonight, as we often do, with a student showcase, and I wanna introduce Megan Harrison, teacher at the high school, uh, head of, uh, our, uh, early college programming at the high school, to introduce our student showcase for tonight. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, uh, Ms. Harrison.
Hi, everybody, thank you. So I'm here really just to introduce Kayla. Kayla Vasquez is one of our early college sophomores in the TED Academy. Um, and because of our school closures, her HCC class had to shift from a hands-on robotics class to more of an online computer programming class, and Kayla was able to find a workaround when we were having trouble with the online programming. And she's doing a great job in her class, so we invited her here. And Kayla, can you please just tell us a little bit about your experience in the HCC class and how you fixed the technology program?
Sure. Hi, y'all, I'm Kayla Vasquez. Um, so, the early college class first started as a robotics class. Right? But then with all this pandemic going on, we had to switch to a computer science using Python. I am one of the students who have to use one of the school Chromebooks because my mother is using mine to do her job. Um, so, we couldn't really use the website our professor wanted us to download, so we had to use another app called PyDroid 3. I really didn't like how that functioned. So, there was one day I was on a Zoom class with one of my teachers, Heather Fuller, and she mentioned something, and I started looking up to see how I could download the website called Spider with the function of Python to use on the Chromebook. And I was reading, I read like three articles to see what would work. I tried it all. And then there was this one article, I don't remember what it was called, but it helped. And I went to this, it suggested me to go to this website called RollApp and to try downloading it from there. You did have to make an account with that website called RollApp. And then it lets you, it would allow you to use the program Spider, and it worked for the rest of the class.
Thank you, Kayla. I don't even know what language you're speaking. I mean, I'm, it's all foreign to me, I'm so impressed. You're throwing out words that I've never heard before. I, are you, you're a sophomore?
Yes.
Okay, and tell, and what, uh, and you, what acad, what, um, you're with the HCC Early College Program, right?
Yes, I am.
And which academy?
I am in Technology Engineering and Design.
Great. Does, uh, do other folks have questions for Kayla? Very impressive.
Kayla, I got a question. Um, this is Mario Flores. I wanted to ask, what was the first step, like, what is the first thing you did when you, did you go to a search engine and just type in a question, or what was that, what was that prompt that you asked?
Um, no, it was, there was one of a homework that we had to try and do, and it was to prompt it with a variable, and then to have it print out, um, some math problems.
Thank you.
Charlotte, Ms. Brunette?
Hi, Kayla. Um, I heard that you're in the TED Academy, which is amazing, especially because, you know, we do work with women in STEM, obviously.
Yeah.
They're awesome. But I was just wondering, how do you feel about since, um, your math classes, you know, especially because you're going into a STEM-heavy, uh, field, has a lot of math involved? Do you feel like, um, your math classes helped with the application of this computer science program?
Yes, they sure did.
Kayla, Kayla, I'm just curious, what do you, what's your career plans? I mean, I would hire you tomorrow, based on what you just?
I honestly, I wanna be a neuroscientist, neuro, neurosurgeon. But I don't know, because I like the academy I'm into, so I might switch around my plans to be in engineering.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead to the phone people, um, because the only person that I saw for the raise hand was just Charlotte. I don't see anybody else. So I'm gonna go ahead with Mr. Colomore. Do you have any questions or comment? Okay, um, how about Ms. Tensley-Williams? Do you have a question or a comment?
Um, yeah, I'm happy to hear everyone's voice, and I'm just taking it in right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, that was awesome, Kayla. Thank you for, for coming here today. Um, well, this evening, right, coming here, it's not like you came here, you came from, we're all watching each other from home, but thank you for participating and, um, providing us with all that information and what you had to do just to navigate and to be able to do what you gotta do, right?
Yeah.
Was there anything else, Doctors Wright, that you wanted to add?
No, thank you, Kayla, for joining us, uh, on, you know, this evening. We really appreciate it, and it's that you're, you're demonstrating the kind of ingenuity and creativeness and uh, initiative that we would hope to see in all of our students, and so, uh, super impressed. You have a bright future. Keep on that path. Don't let anybody tell you you can't accomplish those goals that you just, uh, told us you want for your career. Um, congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent. I'm gonna go with Liz right now. Liz, was there any public comment, by the way?
I received no public comment.
Great. So moving on to communications and reports, I know for student report, we have Ms. Brunette here. Um, Mr. Perez, has he been available? Has he, does, is he aware of our school committee meetings by any chance?
He is aware. I have, um, emailed the appropriate people to forward them onto him. I don't have a direct contact for him, um, but yes.
Okay, alright, great. Well, thank you, Charlotte, for being here. So, do you have any reports to provide to us this evening?
I have three bullet points. So the fourth quarter began on May 4th. Teachers are to assign tasks, uh, per class day and have designated office hours and times, which are later in your packet. Uh, the AP exams were completed online over the past two weeks, which, um, despite some technological errors, went pretty smoothly. And senior prom and graduation and other events, um, dates were proposed for around August 2nd.
Oh. Okay, great. Um, I do have a question here from Mr. Sheehan.
Yeah, just regarding AP exams, I know that, um, internationally, there's been some major issues with, uh, AP exams and the College Board's ability to actually process the exam and submit it. Um, do we know how many students in Hoyoke have been told that they have to go back in and retake the test?
Um, no, they were supposed to if they thought they had any technical difficulty to submit a makeup form request themselves.
Have, but have, have students, I don't know if Doctors Wright or Dr. Mahoney can answer, I mean, given the, um, with what's been going on with, um, what reports have we been getting and are we tracking to see? I know it can be fully tracked on the administrator's level to see how many students aren't being able to submit.
Steve, you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead, Steve, yeah.
So I can tell you right now that, um, uh, we have, we've had no reports from kids as teachers have been checking in with them after, uh, they've done, taken the test. We haven't had any reports of, um, kids having technical difficulties. Um, I know that, uh, Ms. Gonzalez and Mrs. Kier, though, uh, will be running a report on that on Wednesday, um, and, and see what we, um, get from the College Board directly. Um, but, but that's what we have right now.
And so how many students did we have that, um, had originally thought they would take the test, the traditional mode, have now decided not to, or, um, just that this isn't the way they want to test?
Uh, we thought we had about eighty-five percent of our kids, uh, lined up to take the test, um, and, uh, but we'll, when we run this report, uh, later this week, we'll have a sense of who actually sat down and, and, and completed the exam. I can get those numbers to Doctors Wright by Thursday, Friday of this week.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Mildred. Mildred, uh, while we're on the high school, um, Lori Dennis is here, uh, who's our vocational director at the Dean Campus. There were questions last meeting, uh, that I know Lori has, uh, was briefed on what those are regarding some of the technical requirements that are impacted by the pandemic. So we brought Lori back here, Ms. Dennis back, uh, to address those and see if, you know, other committee members had questions for her about students who are trying to pursue certifications, uh, related to their shops.
So I'm not sure if that's something that we wanna discuss within the Phase 3 remote learning, even though it's, you know, it's specific to, to the shops and certification? Or is that something we wanna take on right now and, and just talk about it with? Would it be based off of what Charlotte was speaking about?
Yeah, I think it'd be great if we could take it up right now.
Okay.
So Lori, I don't know if you wanna just address what, uh, came out of last meeting and then other members cannot follow up with questions.
Sure. Um, first, I wanna thank you for inviting me, uh, tonight and allowing me the opportunity to explain our vocational remote learning plan and hopefully to put to rest the concerns and questions regarding the students falling behind or not acquiring the hours necessary to trip, uh, certain trade areas. Um, I think when we all think about vocational ed, first, our thoughts immediately rest on the hands-on aspect of the trade area. We think about carpentry students, cutting wood, culinary students stirring sauces, and maybe health-assisting, uh, students taking blood pressure. Or maybe we think back to our old days of being in woodshop or home ec in our high schools, you know, where we built birdhouses or made brownies. While the hands-on aspect is vital to vocational program, programming, it is only one-sixth of the robust comprehensive curriculum that Massachusetts mandates for its Chapter 74 programs, which means there's plenty to do while we're in remote learning. I just wanna briefly go over the six strands that make up those frameworks. The first one is, uh, safety and health, knowledge and skills. The topics range from, uh, topics such as PPE to ergonomics, the safe handling of hazardous materials, to learning what the employee, an employer can do to prevent accidents. Currently, our eleventh grade students are in Week 3 of their online OSHA 10 certification training. Uh, they were prepped in their, um, face-to-face classes before they, throughout the entire year, so this is when they would be doing that anyway, whether we were remote learning or not. Strand 2 is the one that most people are familiar with, and it's technical skills and knowledge. Um, that's the doing and the practicing of the skills, but along with those, that practice is the related theory, the bookwork of the vocational area. And this could be the study of muscular systems and health assisting, or learning how to determine the electrical load of Romex cables. Um, so it's all of that book learning that you need to have before you go into the shop area. Strand 3 is the academic crosswalks, ELA, math, um, computer science, regular science, physics, which you, is used whether we're in the shop or we're on remote learning. Strand 4 is the employability and career readiness. This is what our ninth and 10th graders are currently immersed in, and includes core, career awareness and exploration through starting their vocational MyCap portfolios that are required by the state. So this is vital work that needs to be done during these grades. Strand 5 is the management and entrepreneurship. Uh, includes topics such as creating business plans, understanding employment practices and employee relations, as well as the fiscal, legal, and ethical responsibilities that all businesses and business owners have. Strand 6 is the technology literacy skills and knowledge, and due to the closure, students by default are demonstrating some of their competencies just through the remote learning. Uh, this strand represents much of the hard and software typically used in most businesses, such as spreadsheet, spreadsheets in Excel, and in sheets, PowerPoint and slides, as well as survey software and the ethical issues surrounding both, uh, internet use both in business and in their own lives. I want you to know that I am on directors' meetings two to three times a week with Associate Commissioner Elizabeth Bennett and North Cliff Chong, Mava, and the other seventy-one schools that make up vocational education in Massachusetts. We have worked with DESI and Mava to create remote learning opportunities that are engaging, relevant, and vital, to a well-rounded vocational education. Every director in the state was tasked with supporting a trade area and coordinating shared resource docs, as well as space for instructors to collaborate. I'm happy to say that they're collaborating in ways that probably have never been seen before. Hoyoke is not alone in creating these remote learning, uh, opportunities for kids. It's been a, a shared endeavor with much input, input from other districts as well as the state and Mava. One last thing, in response to the concern that students may not be getting the hours necessary for licensing boards, the thought expressed at the meeting, uh, last month was correct. Licensing boards never lessen the requirements for licensure or certification. This being said, through the collaboration in the directors' meetings, we have finalized and submitted remote learning plans with all of the licensing boards for the vocational areas that mandate a certain amount of hours and have received approval for our plan, so students can continue earning their hours toward, towards licensure, apprenticeship, or union requirements based on that very learning that we've implemented. Does that help?
It does, um, it does, and I do have a question from Mr. Sheehan.
Yeah, I brought this up before, and I think, um, I, I had brought this up at the last meeting. So I'm wondering, what is the, I think that's a, a great Band-Aid right now, that I think that we have this opportunity, that we can do a lot of the in-class stuff, um, remotely? But what is the planning in place if in the future, we have extended periods of, of no school? I mean, whether it's a pandemic or anything else, um, how are we going to work through this, and what impact will it have on any type of exploratory programming for, uh, students?
Okay, so we have been discussing that in the directors' meetings, and going forward, I am quite confident in saying that if we were put on remote learning for an entire year, strands four, five, and six would maintain us on that three-hour-a-week, amount of work for that, for the vocational content areas without a problem. As far as exploratory, that's being discussed right now, um, at the directors' meetings, and there's a lot of, um, lot of talk about whether or not are we coming back and we're, we're doing a different kind of scheduling, where we're doing, uh, social distancing, where we can put fewer kids through. Um, that's still really up in the air. Nothing is concrete right now.
I, I guess I don't follow what was just, so, did you say that if for some reason we were out of school for another year, that there wouldn't be an impact on the technical skills of the students, that all of that could be done virtually?
So, uh, when you're saying technical skills, are you talking about the frameworks and the curriculum being taught, or are you talking just the hands-on?
I, I, I'm talking the hands-on portion of it. I mean, I, I think that that's a critical piece, and I, you could have students, I mean, a, a junior could be, I, I mean, i- in that thought that maybe schools interrupted for a longer period of time, I mean, someone who's a, currently a, a junior and a rising senior. I mean, they could be, they could have been outside of their actual physical classroom since, what, May, or March 13th? Um, with that, so I mean, is it, it, it really, you really believe that not being in your shop, you'd still be prepared to enter your field?
Well, I, I'm not gonna say that. What I'm going to say is that prior to this year, strands four, five, and six were not taught at Dean. Okay, they focused primarily on strands two. So a lot of this is the first time that the eleventh and twelfth graders are getting this content. So, I mean, this has to happen, and again, will they need, when I say we could get by with a year, with the fours, fives, and sixes? I don't even wanna see that happen, because you're absolutely right. It is a vital part of our curriculum, but it is one-sixth. We could get by, just as the other schools are saying they can get by. Um, I, my son-in-law is a culinary arts teacher in Sturbridge at Tantascra. I watch his videos every day. His kids are all cooking with him at the same time. Uh, Sturbridge is a very affluent, um, district. There's a different demographics. We struggle with that in our district. It's, it's not gonna be the same.
Ms. Burks?
So, I share a lot of Devon's concerns, um, you know, being somebody who went to Dean, who was in the shop, um, for my education, there's no way possible that these kids are getting what they need without getting the hands-on. Your juniors and seniors that are taking, uh, for health assistance, for instance, you know, they need to be able to show competencies in taking accurate blood pressures and all those things, like, there's no way that, that, that possibly that following those strands is enough. Um, they need the hands-on, and we really, we need to think outside of that, get creative.
Right, I absolutely agree with you. They do, they do need that. What I'm saying, when I'm talking about the fours, fives, and sixes, is that that can help us along the way until we can get back in. Like I said, I mean, that, I, I said that was a vital part of it. But for right now, are they getting mandated competencies? Are they meeting them through remote learning? They are. The hands-on portion has been put off for right now. I mean, let's hope we are going back, at least on a modified schedule or something, but I, I know nothing about that. So I can, I can say, um, on my behalf, that the teachers are teaching competencies that are mandated by the state, um, that have not been met prior to this. So it's, uh, it's bringing them along. Um, and yeah, I wanna go back to school. I'd like to, I wish it was safe to go back in next week.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll just jump in here. I, I'm actually not as concerned about the shop spaces or return to school. I, I think we can keep, uh, we have a lot more room at Dean in general because of the size of the spaces, to be able to have the number of kids in rooms and in spaces. I'm a lot more concerned about, uh, classrooms of twenty-five-plus kids tightly packed at Holyoke High School North or and other places around the district. I think in some ways, it's a little, in a lot of ways, it's a lot easier for us to, um, adhere to some of the guidance. Um, but to, you know, I don't disagree with Devon and, uh, Becky, like, it's, it's, it's very hard to replicate that experience if we don't have kids in the hands-on experience, uh, and a hands-on, um, in the, then the shop experience, but I, I, uh, I guess I'm optimistic here to say we're co, we're, we're gonna return, and if there's a place that's easier for us to ensure the safety and wellness of kids, it would be at Dean, given the, um, the way the building is laid out, uh, more so than other places.
So I have one more question, but before I go to, um, um, Mr. Sheehan, I'm just gonna quickly go through the three phone people, so that would be, uh, Mr. Wallahan, do you have any question or comment?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Ms. Rosalie Tensley-Williams, do you have any comment or question?
Um, all set, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Colomore, do you have any comment or question? Okay, so, um, Mr. Sheehan, I see that you raised your hand.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I, I also, I mean, I hope and I believe that we will be back in some sort of in-person instruction in the fall. What that looks like, I, I couldn't tell you, and what any of that is, and I, I think I share Steve's same concerns that, I mean, none of our current class sizes are in any school, except for maybe Dean, are gonna be conducive to um, proper social distancing and a normal school schedule. Um, are there, just thinking about technology and things, are there programs that we don't own that, um, are not necessarily staff-created, but that help meet those standards? I mean, there's nothing like being able to do that hands-on work, but are there, um, are there programs that can at least simulate some of that as a supplemental piece of a student's education? Um, with that, and, and also the, um, the thought about someone, um, being on video and having, uh, students, you've mentioned a cooking class, and I guess I wanna dig into what it, it's meant by that our students wouldn't be able to do that, the same as the students in Tantascra.
A lot of our students have said, our culinary teachers have reached out, um, and, you know, kind of talked about doing some cooking, um, in their houses, and they've said, well, I don't, I don't have a lot of ingredients. Okay?
Can we get them the ingredients?
Can we get them the ingredients?
Steve, Anthony, I mean, can we not?
I don't know.
If we had?
Yeah, we could. Yeah, absolutely. I don't, I mean, look, I, there should be no reason why we can't do our best to replicate that, and we can, okay, we shouldn't let any of those things be barriers to our kids having that experience.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would think Sedexo could work with us on, on something with getting ingredients or, or whatever it may be. I mean, there has to be a little bit of savings just from that budget within the culinary program. I mean, they would have the ingredients in the classroom and the budget to purchase them for the classroom. I mean, throw them in a box and let's get someone to deliver them to the kids' home.
Just like we're trying to get resources to kids who don't have them, devices, same thing. I mean, whatever they need to do to, so that shouldn't be a barrier, and we should work on getting that to kids, uh, in order for them to, uh, continue their learning, if that's a barrier. I mean, yeah, some, you know, so, there's some facility things we can't do, but if it's a question of ingredients or other, there shouldn't- But if it's a question of ingredients or other, there shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't let those things be obstacles. So that's something we can definitely follow up on. But just like we bring devices to kids' houses, we'll do that for, um, cooking supplies or ingredients.
And, and Mr. Sheehan, just to, just to, um, follow up on that, you know, this is, this is something that across 71 different schools for vocational ed, and I've got to tell you, I've never seen less than 65 on any one of our meetings. And this is something that we're all running into. There are, there is software for different shops. We just purchased a hair cutting simulator for cosmetology with the rest of their budget. Like I said, this was not something that we were counting on. And when we were looking at our Perkins funding for our equipment and stuff, this was not something that, at the beginning of the year, we anticipated. This is something that we now know is on our radar. So, you know, going forward, there'll be more simulators.
And then Steve, Dr. Zright, with, I, I know that schools are closed by order of the governor. But when you think about shops, are any of shops considered under some of the openings? If they're only servicing, I mean, there's a lot of people who need their hair done. I mean, are, are shops falling into the school aspect of it? Or can they fall under the, um, hairdressing aspect of it?
I would think they fall under the school, but Lori, you're not shaking your head no, so.
No, no. Um, and that's, that's right from the associate commissioners. Um, we are not allowed to do services or, um, have customers in at this time until further notice.
And when was that notice given?
This has been since we closed.
Okay.
Yeah, so until they tell us yes, then it's, you know, it's a no-go.
So I don't see any hands raised, but I do see a green check mark next to Aaron's name. Aaron, do you have a question or a comment? Aaron Brunel?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's kind of was like just agreeing with Devon.
I don't know. I, I always wonder, I'm like, either she's like, yes, or she's like.
Yeah, it was more like, yes, like, good point, sorry.
All right, no, no problem, now I know. Okay, so, um, great information, thank you very much, Ms. Dennis. Um, Ms. Burnett, did you have anything else to share? Or when you were giving your report?
Um, no, I think that's about it.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Um, so we're going to go ahead then and move on to the superintendent receiver communication.
Yeah, so thank you. Uh, we're going to jump right into the first presentation, which is going to be brief. Uh, is about, um, we did a survey of families. It was both English-speaking and Spanish-speaking families regarding their experience with the closure. And we wanted to share the results. And not a lot of people, uh, responded. We get about 300 people respond. But I do think the information is worth looking at. It's, I think there's, directionally, it has some good information. Um, we, we also surveyed students as well. Um, there were students and families from all the schools that respond, responded. Small numbers, albeit in many schools. But we did have a response from at least one student and one, um, uh, parent from each of the schools. So, um, Mario's going to share, um, a quick update on the stakeholder needs survey that we gave out a few weeks ago to the community. Uh, so Mario, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Zright, good evening, everyone. We're going to jump right into it. Uh, so we, we administered a survey about four weeks ago. And here's the rationale. We, we just wanted to make sure that we were informing our practices and our approaches, uh, in a data-driven manner. And, uh, Jose Bowles Department, the Family Community Engagement Department, uh, created the survey. We had Cabinet give feedback, and we finalized and administered it about four weeks ago. We took a look at the data, did some data analysis, and we're able to pull a brief report for you all here today. The first section is going to look at our student responses, the second at our family responses. Uh, if there are questions, uh, there is a, a slide at the very end for questions. If you want a parking lot for questions, so we can, um, just answer them all at the same time. If there's a glaring thing off, or you really, really, you know, have a burning question immediately, of course, I'm open to that as well. So I'd ask the facilitator to help me, um, help me along with that. And what we were trying to capture was, uh, you know, basic needs, how communication has been, access, connectivity, and any social, emotional needs or, or additional supports needed as families kind of navigate this closure. Here's a brief overview. So we surveyed 226 students and 291 family members. As you can see, the 29 and 25 respectively for each were for our Spanish-speaking families. We looked at student perceptual data, effectiveness of work provision. So how do they, how do they feel, uh, the effectiveness ha- has been for the work we provided to them? The effectiveness of our communication in addition to their staff? And lastly, how they're self-caring? So there, there will be some highlights there as well. In terms of our family data, we're looking at access. That includes both tech, so that means devices and connectivity. So Wi-Fi access, et cetera, communication. So how do they best prefer to be communicated with? And then the effectiveness of that communication, the capacity, which includes the tools they have at home, the resources, as well as their own internal capacity to facilitate and support their, their child's learning? Any additional support needed? And then lastly, the amount of work provided to students. So when you look at the data, I've pulled the data, uh, you'll, you'll see some pie graphs. And at the top will be our English respondent data. And at the bottom, you'll see our Spanish respondent data. So this is with regard to keeping up with schoolwork. So the question is, how easy or difficult has it been for you to keep up with your schoolwork during the school closure? In past survey analysis, I've been working, uh, doing qualitative data analysis, uh, for the past about 10 years. And typically, we're looking at our neutral and what you might consider negative answers as things that we really need to look at in terms of providing support and intervention. So to give you an example here, whether neither easy or difficult is a neutral answer, somewhat difficult and extremely difficult would fall more on the negative side. So we're looking at that data. Now, extremely easy and somewhat easy, you see the blue and the red there? Can you all see my cursor? Can I get a thumbs up if people can see my cursor? Okay, so if you're looking at the extremely easy or somewhat easy data, right? We're looking at about almost 40% on the English side, very comparable on the Spanish side, with about 36%. That it's, it's easy or somewhat easy. Whereas neutral and kind of somewhat difficult and extremely difficult, these are data points that we really need to dive into and look at. And it's pretty comparable on, on this side, except the, uh, you know, when you're looking at the somewhat difficult section of that data. I'll give folks about 10 to 20 seconds to just internalize that data. Another quick point, we did not pull every single question. Uh, we pulled the ones that we thought would be most impactful. This is the amount of information. Again, this is student data. So do communications, email updates, Google Classroom, et cetera, from school to students have the right amount of information? As you can see, just the right amount or too much information? We, I, I err on the side of, let's give them too much as opposed to too little. But here you see that we have about an 88% positive response and very comparable on the Spanish side with about 75. So overall, we can look at the data point and say that our students feel good about the information that we're sending out to them. Again, if you have questions, I would advise that you just take some notes, parking lot those, and then we can, we can tackle those at the end of the presentation. This is for the helpfulness of the communication. So how helpful have the communications been? Including Google Classroom posts, as you know, our HPS at Home website, and, and our teachers are sharing out assignments and making sure that they're contacting students. So we want to make sure that students, uh, are able to tell us whether that communication has been helpful. When you're looking at helpful here, very helpful, extremely helpful. Helpful is not a neutral response. So we'd be looking at this part of the data, 35, 21, 22%. We're looking at in the high 70s in terms of communications being helpful for our students. Again, pretty comparable on the Spanish side. Right, 58, 83, I, I think my math might be a little off. But we're looking at about a little under 85% on the Spanish side. And, um, 56, about the high 70s on the English side. Here's some other highlights is based on the data. Uh, and, and this one was, was pretty impactful for us when we looked at it. 11% of English-speaking respondents stated that they, they needed or weren't sure if they needed someone to talk to versus 22% for our else students. So that's double the amount of students. So overall, our Spanish-speaking students are saying at double the rate that they need someone to talk to or don't know if they need someone to talk to. And, uh, and as we think through a social, emotional lens, if they don't know, I would, I would, uh, argue that those are the folks that we need to reach out to. So, uh, we encouraged our principals, we presented this to Cabinet and our principals as well, to dive into, into their own individual school data and make sure that their counselors and their support staff are reaching out to students, which they've been doing fairly consistently and very effectively. Uh, with the exception of, you know, the stuff that, that's happening now with disengagement. But overall, they're doing a very good job of reaching out. In terms of the top six methods of self-care, this isn't an exhaustive list. So kids listed other things that they're doing at home to self-care, but these are the top six that we saw. So going outside, which of course speaks to a potential public health issue, especially with, with three generations living under some roof. So these are the things that we want to consider. Going outside, exercising, reading, which is great for us to see. Hanging out with family, which I think has been a positive for a lot of folks. One of the positives that's come out of the crisis. Talking to friends, which has been helpful, of course, the socialization aspect. And listening or playing music, which is pretty standard or typical from when you think about our, our students and, and the things that they do to detach as well as the adults, right? We're going to dive into our, our parent data. So this is the student technology access. So do your children have reliable access to a tablet, laptop, or computer? So this is asking about access to devices. We do need to give you the, the disclaimer that this was an electronic survey, of course. So the data is going to be skewed in this direction based on connectivity because you need the connectivity and access to a device in order to take the survey. But as you can see from the respondents, um, they did have that. And you can also count, and we haven't, we haven't really, uh, taken a dive into what that data looks for, for smartphones. But you could have taken this, this phone, this survey from a phone, which could also speak to, you know, I'm taking it from my phone, but I do have other devices. But as you can see, 93, 96% pretty comparable across both groups. This is with regard to the hours engaged in learning. We're, we're trying to engage students in as, as many hours of learning as possible. Uh, we're shooting for about three to four hours per day. And, um, as you can see, the data is pretty comparable for both our English-speaking and our Spanish-speaking students, uh, one to one and a half hours, two to, two to three hours, and then two to three hours down here on, on the Spanish side. So, um, overall, we were, we were happy with this data point, of course. You know, when you're looking at 15% of kids that are at zero, um, I'm sorry, three here and one, and four here, pretty comparable, uh, but we're happy with, with that two to three hours. Of course, we'd like to bump up this one, one and a half. And as we start working on our remote learning plans, you know, we're, we're kind of flying the plane as, we're building the plane as we fly, and so we're hoping to bump those numbers up. This is the amount of work that kids are getting, that parents feel, are they getting the, the right amount of work? Is it adequate? So as you can see, the middle bar is just the right amount of work. The too much work is here, and the too little work is here. Same thing on the Spanish-speaking side. So you see the numbers are pretty comparable, 74 to 72%. But we do have a significant amount of parents that feel like they're, they're too much or too little. All right, so on the English-speaking side, we're looking at close to 32%. And down on the English side, almost identical at 32%. This is with regard to our clarity of communication from the, the public schools, around our plan during COVID closure. And as you can see, again, we're looking at, there, there's not a neutral answer here. So we'd be looking at extremely clear and very clear as positive answers. So we're looking at 76, almost 70, exactly 77% on positive respond, respondents here. And, uh, down here, we're at 72%. Again, good data for us to look at. This question was regarding the tools and resources necessary to support learning at home. And it could be, there could be some interpretation there in terms of their own internal capacity and bandwidth or actual tools or resources. But we left it ambiguous on, on purpose. We wanted folks to kind of get their own, uh, relate their own idea of what they feel they have at home and what they need. Again, we're looking at our neutral is here, right? So the neutral would be, neutral and negative would be here, and the positive would be here. Right, they feel overall, uh, over 75% feel like they, they have the tools necessary at home in order to support their child's learning. Very comparable on the Spanish-speaking side, right, almost identical. Some family data, some other highlights for you to consider. Um, we know, we know the access to Wi-Fi question was a little skewed based on the connectivity being needed in order to complete the Google Form survey, uh, administration. Uh, but we, we wanted to point that out. The preferred method of communication, this is in order of, uh, the way they rank them. They would prefer text, emails, followed by voicemail. So that is what families overall are saying, that's the way they prefer to be communicated with. Our food access, while 5 and 4% don't sound too high, um, if we're accounting for over 5,000 students, you're looking at 250 folks that are saying, hey, we need food. And we really, you know, we've been doing a good job of getting, getting it out there. But we just, we want to get everyone who's falling through the cracks. And then lastly, uh, around our SCL needs, 47% of English speakers are concerned for their child's SCL needs versus 80% for our Spanish-speaking families, which is a pretty, uh, it's a pretty strong data point for us to look at. Now we can move on to questions. And I also encourage, I, I want to, first of all, um, before we, we go into questions, just thank Jose Bow and his team for putting the survey together, getting it out there and getting, uh, close to 300 responses, which was, which was pretty, um, it was pretty, we, we feel good about that response rate, uh, considering the fact that we have the COVID closure going on. We just administered surveys for Panorama. So there could be some survey exhaustion in addition to other implications on mental health and, and people's just well-being right now as they navigate the closure. So I just wanted to shout out Jose's department and say, thank you for the work that they've done with all of this. I'll open a floor for questions.
Uh, uh, well, first I want to say, uh, thank you for the presentation. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I'm first going to look up at the board, um, and we're going to go ahead with Mr. Sheehan.
Yeah, so just in regards to the slide, um, regarding hours engaged in learning. Now, I, I understand that we are, that this was just through the survey and the responses that we, um, had received. But aren't we also tracking that within the school as well of how many students? So what is the, I mean, what are the real numbers that we're tracking from the schools and not just the 2, 300 or so, less than 300 respondents?
We just, and we just did this data analysis, uh, over the past few days. We're going to have to juxtapose that data with, with Val and Neer's department and look at what the data, it, it, just to kind of, get to a balance with both of those. I don't know if Val wants to chime in. I can't speak to the data at the school level, um, based on the teacher feedback right now.
So I can give you a little information, Mr. Sheehan, if you'd like. Uh, we have, we are collecting information individually at the schools, and we've started to, um, formalize or make that more cohesive across all of the buildings, how we're, for K-8, how we're, um, collecting that information. And then Dr. Mahoney has another, uh, format for high school. So I can provide you pre-K-8 data right now. We're asking teachers to enter engagement data four times from May 4th through the end of the school year. So we have one data set in now. And then they will enter data three more times regarding engagement. Um, each, each data entry from this point forward till the end of the school year will cover two weeks' worth of, of learning time. Um, I'm trying quickly to try to find my, my workbook. But right now, I can tell you that, um, I just looked at this Thursday, uh, and we're averaging about 34, between 32 and 34% of engagement being moderate to high across all grades, um, and the schools. We have some pockets that are higher, some pockets that are lower. Um, schools, of course, are collecting this information and then looking at it on a daily basis and doing a lot of work around outreach to, um, staff members and, and families. They're working with staff to outreach to families to help problem-solve what the barrier to engagement is. But right now, with online learning, uh, we, pre-K-8, we have about 30, I want to say it's 32.6, but don't quote me. So I, I'm, I'm confident saying it's between 32 and 34% on average aggregated for all grades pre-K-8.
And how do you define moderate to high?
Uh, we have a, that is outlined in our Phase Three documents. We have a, that is outlined in our phase three documents. Let me pull that up real quick.
The school committee also has that in their packet, the breakdown of how we define, well, in the letter we sent the parents, it does define that, but Val, do you want to just?
Yes, yep.
Well, okay, I guess more than that, I guess, how is that, how can you correlate that to the data that we're seeing here?
That's a good point. You know, and I was going to chime in and say, Mr. Shan, that's a great, like, you made me think through. Because this is, this is parent perceptual data, right? So when we look at the actual data that the teachers are reporting, we're going to have to kind of meet in the middle and say, even if if what the teachers are reporting may not be accurate, or at the very least, the parent's perception of how how much the kids are engaging may not be accurate.
If I can jump in, I think there are two different data sets. These questions are specific to the ones who chose, selected to respond, which is about three percent, maybe a little bit less. But on average, around three percent of of what we know of all of Holyoke Community's students, right? These questions that Mario's team asked, which are really important, is the hours that you're you're engaging. And so when at first glance, those who chose to respond, their students are engaging the majority or right around or close to the majority where we we anticipate them. So we we've guided our staff in giving, asking them to provide instruction or learning opportunities for about equalize, equaling about half of the school day. And so when we see two to three hours being forty-seven percent, fifty-two percent, that's where we want that to be. When we're asking teachers to gauge the level of engagement, that's for each and every single student. So while they're related, they're kind of hard to draw conclusions by combining the two. They're almost like two different pieces of information.
Okay, and then just with, I guess, back to the presentation. What are the demographics of the students and families that were pulled? I don't see any breakdowns of amount per grade level or anything like that. So what what is this reflective of that? Do we have a breakdown of how many per grade level of this?
We we have that data, it's just in raw form right now, so I don't have it in a report for you.
Okay, because I think that that's probably, I mean, I would actually find that to be more important than some of the slides that are here. Just to see where that data is coming from, because I think as we've talked about a lot of remote learning and looking at what Ms. Neer's department is is doing and tracking. I think having some of that good data around, especially especially in high schools with with what you found and to see how many respondents were from there. Because we've kind of just passed the the burnout period, I think, for high schools. So of what, I mean, every country's experienced of what everyone that does this has experienced through this. So I think that it would be really important to know where these two hundred and sixty-six or so responses are actually coming from. To see how much of quality data that is for all the grade levels.
I hear you. And I I think that to Val's point, the the data that's being collected exhaustively for all students would be reliable data source rather than than an optional survey about needs. So I I think that we'd have to, we can work together to figure out how the best, the best approach to capture that data. But I I hear your point.
Okay, we're going to go ahead with Ms. Brunel.
Yeah, I just wanted to say as another observation point of the survey too, is that the parents whose kids are more engaged, I would say are the ones who were more likely to fill out the survey. But I think we have to take some accountability for that too. And and so even of the ones that are likely more engaged, this is probably more more reflective of that group. Because those parents are probably more likely to be on internet and have filled out the survey, you know, and be more engaged overall. But I will say from a parent's perspective, you know, even with my kids being in the same school, the same building, you know, one set of children's teachers are just much more organized. They put a schedule out to you the Friday before the week. You know, when your kid needs to be on and what the expectations are. And the other kids' teachers, it's like you can't get a schedule. Like, I don't know when, you know, we know the morning of when there's calls and stuff like that. So that's going to play a huge role as far as just keeping that kind of communication going. The longer that this plays out, the more organized it can be, the more structured it can be. Like, you know, knowing exactly what time your kid needs to be on that computer for a a teacher presentation. And I think that needs to be a lot more focused on having that teacher face-to-face through Google Classroom and Zoom. Because we are not teachers. We need to remember that, that these parents are home with their kids and trying to still work full-time or having the stress of not being able to work full-time and getting what they need to do accomplished. And, you know, even for me, like, you can't be over their shoulder the whole time they're on doing these three to four hours a day. So I think it's important that it's a lot more interactive with the teacher on the other end of the screen, because she's going to hold those children's attention and then the parent can be off getting their work done at the same time. It doesn't feel as much as though we're the ones teaching our children, you know what I'm saying? So but just to the point of the survey, keeping in mind that you're probably getting more response from people that are already more engaged. So there's probably a curve that needs to be adjusted for.
Thank you, Aaron. Mr. Wellahan, did you have a question or a comment?
No, I'll say thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosalie Tensley-Williams, do you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I have a comment. For all the people that were involved in the survey, I thank them because I know it's a lot of work, data work is, there's a lot to it. And I just appreciate every one of them. And I just want them to know that thank you for everything you do for our students in Holyoke.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Mr. Collmore, do you have a question or a comment? Okay, so I just have one question in regards to the survey. I might have missed it. I mean, I was writing stuff down, trying to keep on point here. In the questionnaire, general education versus special education response.
I don't think that was, that wasn't something we captured in the survey.
Okay. So then my question would be, because I'm just, I'm just thinking of students on special education. I know we tend to struggle a whole lot more, especially when you have students that when they were in school required maybe a one-to-one, right, and needed that paraprofessional someone to work with them, one-on-one with the work, so they can be able to to complete it or to better understand it. So now that we're in the remote phase of learning, how are we facilitating that?
Mary Ann, do you want to, want to take that?
Sure, no problem. Hi, everybody. So it's happening a little bit differently in different schools, different situations, as you can imagine. We have had some success with some of the actual, you know, like live work that's happening. So if there's Zoom presentations that that teachers are doing, there are are some that are able to pair the student with their paraprofessional and go into a breakout room so that they're able to explain the material. We have some paraprofessionals that are working with the teacher in advance to get the material. And then they're connecting with the student either on the phone or, you know, sometimes after the fact to be able to explain information. And some of it's being done with the teachers. So that the special education teacher and paraprofessionals are working with the content teachers so that the work is modified in advance, so that the student would be able to access the material. So it's, it's, people are being creative and it's happening in a lot of different ways, but those are just some of the ways that that work is being done.
Thanks, Mary.
But I, so my concern is that we're not being consistent and across the board. And so some students are going to prosper in this and actually excel or or at least be more engaged than others, just not. And so that's where our equity issue now falls. It's who is the child that's being helped and who's the child that's not? What's the school that's putting in the the effort and who's the school that's not? So I, you know what, maybe it's just me, maybe I just live and work off of policies, procedures, and this is how we do stuff and it's straight clearly across the board so that nobody veers and does their thing their way. Because at the end of the day, somebody's dropping the ball and somebody's being left out. And that's what I'm feeling we're doing here now. Some students are being left out. And at, and then how do we look at it? We don't look at it as, geez, what could we have done better? We're like, wow, this kid does, just doesn't seem engaged. The parents probably can't help them. And it's, it's, it's an indirect blame towards the student and the families. Even though we say to ourselves, it's not, it's not, because we're trying all we can. But are we really, if if we're saying that only that some paras are do, are doing it, but not everybody's doing it?
Yeah, so can I, can I just chime in? I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with what you're saying. I mean, I would say that I have very few concerns about our staff not meeting a living up to their professional responsibilities. There are a couple cases, but very few as a district. I've been really pleased. And I I say that with complete, you know, that's genuine, that that people are stepping up. I I do think there are issues about, there are different varying levels of competency and proficiency around using technology. And it is uneven. The experience is uneven. I don't think it's because of a lack of people being engaged. For instance, one of the things with special education students, I want to credit the para-professionals who came forward and asked to have devices. Because our paras didn't have devices. So in the last two weeks, we've shifted to give every para a device. Because paras were advising that they could be doing more for their kids by with technology. And so to the credit of the association, June Lavelle, they came and asked for devices. We gave it to them. And that, the hope is that more kids, because in those classes, we have a lot of our sub-separate classes, right? We have paras who, you know, provide services and can provide support for kids. And that we weren't doing a good enough job of that before, because they didn't have the tools to do that. So now they do have the tools to do that. But I'm not, I'm not a concerned about a profession, like people not engaging. I think it's just, this is challenging for people and we are constantly trying to tweak ourselves to get better at something that our staff was, I'll be completely frank, we were not prepared to do. I mean, as a, as an industry, we weren't prepared to do this. And certainly as a school system, we have to get better at this, because this could happen again. And there are huge equity issues for kids in places like Holyoke, right? Because the gaps are already there. And on top of that, there are, this exacerbates some of the gaps for sure. So we need to get better at this, because this very well could happen to a school or the district come, you know, next fall. So I would, I I just don't want to put that on our, I think our people are doing the very best they can, but as a system, we can get better.
Okay, so Dr. Strike, maybe I need to clarify myself a little bit better.
Maybe.
Because at no point was I saying that they're not doing their job and that people don't want to do their job. What I'm saying is if I understood correctly, so not everybody is doing it. If if that's what I understood correctly, is that right, Ms. Courier?
What I'm saying is that it it's, it looks different for different students. So we do have some students, and and now like Dr. Strike said, that, you know, we're we're getting greater access for paraprofessionals to have access to technology. But we had a number of paraprofessionals that did not have the access to technology. So, right, that was a barrier for them, but they were coming up with alternate ways to be able to connect with students. It might be a phone call to a student, it might be a phone call checking in, going over assignments, going over work. So that, you know, it it does not necessarily look the exact same for every student. But that staff are reaching out to students, are reaching out to families. One thing that I would like to highlight, which is happening right now, is that families will be receiving remote learning plans. If their child is on an IEP, which spells out how services are being provided. So what I would ask is if there's any concerns that parents might have, if they feel that their child is not getting access to all of their services, they reach out to all, to the individuals that are listed in that remote learning plan. It's going to be their case manager, whoever their primary contact is, along with their service providers. So that way the team can meet and remedy that if there is an issue.
Okay, so just going on that, what you had mentioned. So then is it fair to say that any student that currently on their IEP says that they have the one-to-one, that that is being met and that person is working with them? Even if you had to assign somebody else?
So it should be yes. So if, so if there's a concern that a student that has a one-to-one paraprofessional in their IEP is not in contact or has not received contact from their one-on-one paraprofessional, then yes, that parent should definitely reach out. And they can reach out to my office if if that's easier. But they should certainly reach out to the teacher and to any of the team members to remedy that, yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we don't have a misunderstanding here and people start thinking, oh, my God, Mildred's saying I'm not doing my job. Nope, that's not what I'm saying. All I'm, I'm asking, because at the end of the day, everybody knows that when it comes, especially to students with special education, I am, I am a huge advocate on that. I want to make sure that they're getting the same quality education. That someone who doesn't have a disability and doesn't have to have I don't even like to use the word too much special here. But doesn't have to have things done for them differently or provided to them differently so they can better access it. I, they, they are deserving of of the same, okay? So I do think everybody that is doing, I mean, everybody is putting in the hard work. I do know that. Everybody across, across the board in the, in the district is is doing all that they can for students. The next person is Ms. Burks. Do you have a comment or question?
Both. So is there any way that we can get the same kind of information? You know, directly about our special ed students is my first question. And, you know, I guess I have questions too. I have been approached by some families wondering the status of their paraprofessionals and what's happening there and trying to figure out this online learning. So how are we tracking the involvement of people? Is there any way to track that information as well to know that we really are reaching students like we're supposed to be? And I think maybe that that doing a poll of our special ed families would be important to try to help get that information as well.
Yeah, I think we could do something for special education families, perhaps through the CPAC. I think it would be interesting to collect that information. And to Mildred's point, I, I do agree that they're the among the most vulnerable populations in terms of regressing during this period of time. And so we want to, you know, that's why we're talking a lot about what summer school is going to look like, what we're able to do, because that's a critical time. Especially given that we've been out of school for so long. But yeah, we could, we could figure out a way to send out a survey to special education families. I would encourage the CPAC group to work with Mary Ann to figure out, you know, what questions. Think the shorter the better to get, you know, so people. But I think we could collect information specifically from them. And to Mary Ann's point, if anybody feels that they're not getting their, the support of a one-to-one para, please let us know. Please let Mary Ann know as soon as possible, if that's the case.
But I think the other piece is that some special ed families are so overwhelmed that they are starting to like gradually disengage.
Yep.
Because that engagement adds another layer. So I think there's some frustration there as well. And I just think we need to be mindful and kind of keep an eye out, especially when they're starting to show signs of disengagement, to see where we can, you know, kind of step in and see if we can assist.
All right, thank, oh, I have someone else. That would be, I don't want to say the last name wrong. I I also don't want to call you by your first name. Ms. Aneer?
Hi, yep. I just wanted to say real quick that we we do have on the the engagement tracker, we have it hidden, but we can pull data for our EL students and also for students who have been identified for special education supports. So we can disaggregate the data based on that. And I know Mary Ann's team is also tracking other services. And so once we have a little more data in the school-based trackers, we can pull that and take a look at where are our highest needs as far as low engagement goes. And that way we can And that way we can target our supports the right way.
Thank you. Um, okay. I don't see any further questions. And I believe I did go through everyone um, on the phone. So, well, thank you for the presentation. Um, it's good information. Oh my God, everything's just moving on my page right now. Oh, I see what it is. Um, Dr. Strike wants to move on to the budget presentation. Dr. Strike? Are you there?
Uh, sorry, I was muted. Okay. Yep. Uh, can you all see my screen?
Are we moving to budget or were you gonna go over the other stuff here?
We're gonna go, we're gonna go right to budget.
Oh, okay.
Well, people are fresh. Um, can you all see my screen? Okay. So Anthony Soto and I are gonna do this uh, together. Uh, and then Ms. Aneer is gonna have one slide. Val's gonna have one slide as well. But this is the budget overview. We do this every year in May. Um, this is a high level overview. You'll get the full um, packet um, or the budget uh, document in the beginning of June. Um, and so um, I'm just gonna go through this with you. You know, you've seen our um, obviously our vision as a district. I'm not, I'm not gonna read that to you. Um, and then here's our mission statement. And I just, I want to make sure that we ground our budget proposal for the upcoming year in the vision, the values um, of the district, and then also looking at what our priorities. Um, as we wrote the second evolution of the turnaround plan, we narrowed our focus on four key priorities, uh, which were instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And we um, we uh, linked our priorities around these four areas. Um, and then equity and the notion of making sure that all really does mean all and that our kids, that we're making decisions about what's in the best need and, in the, the best interest of the kids that are students that have been traditionally marginalized, whether they be um, low income, whether they be students of color, whether they be special education students and English language learners, uh, we want to make sure that we uh, apply an equity lens to our decision-making. And not just our, our, not just programmatically, but how we use our resources as a school system. So our strategic goals for the upcoming year, and this is not different than what we had last year. We're trying to keep consistent and just go deeper with the work, as you've heard me say, and you've heard the new receiver mention as well. Around instructional leadership, we need to continue to push um, academic gains in reading and math particularly. Um, we, we've seen some gains in reading, not as much in mathematics. Um, so there's a strong focus around um, uh, the, our academic push particularly in mathematics um, and ELA. Management and operations, um, we, we've uh, with the, with the addition of uh, Mario's role, uh, we're not only just looking at academics, but social, emotional and behavioral supports for students through a tiered system of support. And uh, that remains a critical focus, our goal for us in the upcoming year. Around family and community engagement, you, you've heard us talk and we've talked about not just um, you know, engaging parents through uh, you know, um, family nights, but how do we empower and equip them to partner with our schools to meet their children's needs? So they really know how to help their children with what the work they're doing and not, and uh, certainly now more than ever, you know, we want, uh, you can see that our parents do need more support in order to help kids with uh, their work at home. Um, and then professional culture, we, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about issues around teacher retention and teacher development and growth. And we, and we do know that ultimately uh, people want to work in a place where they feel like they're learning, are growing, and uh, around getting exceptional results for kids where they feel effective. There's a sense of efficacy around their work. Okay. Um, I'm gonna turn over to Val to speak a little bit about our deeper focus around our instructional core and what um, our instructional work is going to look like for the upcoming school year.
Hi, I'm, I'm not gonna um, read the slide to you. There's a lot there and I think you can take a look at that. What I want to say is that we know that the task drives this um, cycle. And the cycle is how the um, the instructional components, the teacher, the content or our curriculum and the students engage with one another to ensure that high quality learning is happening. And so when we say that the task drives that, tasks are what we ask the students to do to learn the academic skills and content that we want them to master. And so we want to make sure that that structure, the tasks and um, lessons we're asking students to do are structured to provide um, the desired learning outcomes that we're looking for, that we capitalize on the students' funds of knowledge, that um, that it centers around problem solving and meaning-making, collaborative work, discourse. Um, and so ultimately, this cycle works best when we are asking, when the teacher is focusing their um, lesson planning around what, what is it we know we want students to be able to do? Uh, how will we show, how will we ask students to show what they're doing? Why would this lesson matter to students? So when we're planning the curriculum, am I tapping into what students already know? What, what do they bring to the table? Um, and how do I use that to engage them in meaningful learning opportunities? And then what am I going to, as the educator, explicitly teach them? How am I gonna draw out what the student knows, but then what skills do I have to explicitly teach? So that they then can be released to do the heavy cognitive lift of the learning. Uh, and all of that comes down to how we plan for our, our lessons. So the curriculum we use, the professional development we provide to teachers, continuously building um, our, our uh, knowledge base as educators and making sure we actively engage the students. So this instructional core is, is strengthening all three of these components so that we can provide strong uh, instruction for students is what we use to make decisions um, around how to purchase and support our instructional resources in um, Holyoke.
Thank you, Val. Um, and I talked a little bit about the equity lens. Uh, part of this is also asking ourselves these four questions. Uh, last year we introduced these four questions as a leadership team and as a district to really look at, uh, are we making sure that students and staff and families who need the most are getting the most and how we use our resources? Are we, are we listening to and incorporating the voices of those who have not been heard historically? Is our, are, are the way our resources being spent promoting access and inclusion for all students? Um, and then are we embracing the greater diversity of our students and families in the way we think about using our resources as a system? So I, that was a quick run through to some, like what anchors are thinking. And this budget design, I believe, is strongly connected to uh, our priorities, our instructional focus, and this commitment to equity and excellence as a school system. Um, I want to just uh, return your, um, if you remember, this is a slide we shared two months ago in our March meeting around the Student Opportunity Act. Um, we, as you know, we engaged stakeholders in the district, which was a great exercise, should have been done regardless of having to do it for Student Opportunity Act. And we came up, we, we, with the input from student, staff, families, we shared at our March meeting that these, this is the places we were going to invest um, the extra dollars that we um, were scheduled to get in the Student Opportunity Act this year. Now, right now, our budget still reflects the governor's budget or proposal, which includes the Student Opportunity Act funding. And so these items here, full day, high quality pre-K, investment in early college, holistic student need, support needs, uh, the expansion of dual language, um, uh, extra support in co-teaching with, for students with disabilities in English language learners, and then expansion of the arts, athletics, and enrichment are still part of this budget proposal. Um, and are connected to the SOA, uh, SOA presentation we gave um, earlier um, in, in March. So I'm just gonna share with you before Anthony goes to the numbers. This budget includes the following, and you've heard many, you've heard much of this already in the SOA presentation, but I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things. It does, uh, it does include our commitment to expanding dual language, as you can see, including the addition of a classroom at Kelly School, where we're converting one general education classroom to a dual language class in kindergarten at Kelly. It's not an extra class, it's a conversion. Um, it does continue our expansion at Veritas Prep. Our budget has funding for that. It, it, as you know, we're transitioning Donahue students to STEM for middle school beginning in sixth grade for the uh, the rising sixth graders. So that, that, that investment is there. And we are providing extra investment, this is important, in the newer middle school programs. We are oversubsidizing STEM, Veritas, and MedCaf and Kelly because Kelly is phasing out. And so we are giving them extra support for their final year of middle school there because eighth grade, they'll have eighth grade. Those schools are getting more than the allocation because we are trying to improve the middle school ma, um, experience. So there is extra investment in those schools' middle school grades. We are hiring more EL teacher positions. Our ratios were very high this year or have been historically high. We want more teachers to the number of EL students and the same with special education. There's an investment in four EL teachers and an additional um, four and a half special education teachers from the budget from a year ago um, that are intended to better meet the needs, especially of dual identified students. We have many dual identified students in sub separate classrooms who need to get services, both special education and EL services. Um, as a system, that's an area that we feel like we need to improve. We're also adding an additional BCBA that came from feedback from um, uh, many of our autism uh, staff and our special education teachers. That are, that is all part of this budget. Um, additionally, if I can find my clicker here, um, we are investing in a true inclusion model at Donahue School. This is not, this requires adding an additional classroom teacher to Donahue so we can include more special education teach, students from the SIP in autism classrooms into general education classrooms, beginning in kindergarten and first grade. They have a consultant working closely with them. So Donahue can actually be the first true inclusion school. Um, it, full inclusion, I, there is inclusion happening, but a full inclusion school. Um, we're adopting a social studies curriculum, a lot, a lot of feedback there. We're using New, News ELA. So that's part of this budget, expanding science STEM scopes. We have it in some grades, not all grades. Okay? It also includes professional development and coaching across dual language programs. Right now, dual language programs are not as cohesive and aligned. Now that we'll be in three schools, there is a significant need to align what's happening in dual language uh, and make sure that the experience is more consistent with students, for students. Um, we are adding two additional arts teachers in this budget for the district. MedCaf is adding an arts teacher and Lawrence and Morgan are sharing an arts teacher that the schools did not currently have. So we're trying to add more arts back into our schools. At the high school level, you're seeing, we're, we're gonna see uh, the adoption of the illustrative math curriculum, which we use in the middle school, which will move to high school for algebra and geometry. It's a newly designed, but it will ensure that there's consistency with what happens in middle to high school. We, based on the feedback of Charlotte and some of her peers, we are adding a college and career counselor at Holyoke High School. That's an additional staff member. Um, and then at the Dean Campus, ma, many of you know, our shops have not been operating with two people consistently, depending on the numbers. As the numbers have grown, we feel like it's essential that each shop have at least two people. In some cases, it's two teachers and, and others, it's a teacher and an assistant. Um, a teacher or a para professional. That has not been um, true at Dean for the last few years. But now that the numbers are closer to 400 students at the campus, we're able to, we need to make that uh, uh, adjustment. And then we are providing level service to schools without cutting discretionary money. They're getting the same allocation as they have in the past. We did not cut schools' allocations. Uh, around management and operations, we, we talked about the um, the addition of the Community Mental Health Partnership with Brookline Center that is uh, supporting uh, students with acute uh, mental health needs. Uh, we added that to four schools. We were just getting off the ground before we closed. Mario's team is overseeing that. And there's more funding for um, SEL curriculum adoption and more extensive training around mental health and social emotional learning. He actually has a budget. It's still not big enough, but it's a start, which we've never had before. Um, we are increasing security monitoring by adding camera coverage. We have, we are gonna do work on MedCaf because now that building is in our portfolio. So we are going to replace classroom and hallway rugs there. And we are investing in the upgrading of the new MedCaf dual language middle school space, which is the, uh, as you saw in your memo, is gonna, is the former Blessed Sacrament building. And we have to do some work to that facility. Uh, there'd be retrofit lighting in schools, the water filtration systems, which our kids have really support, the uh, the water bottle, water coolers, we're adding more. Um, and then of course, we have furniture materials to purchase for the opening of new classrooms. Around family and community engagement, the, the budget looks very similar. We are opening more seats in full day pre-K programs for special education students. We did not, we have limited the, I mean, we, we have not had as much access to the full day programs for special education students. We are making a strong push to begin to provide more support, uh, more options in pre-K full day for special education students. We are hiring a inclusion specialist, specifically, I should have mentioned, it's one of the sped teacher additions, um, is a full uh, a kid, a pre-K inclusion specialist at the pre-K level. So we can include more special needs students in our pre, full day pre-K program. And as you know, we just launched an online student registration process. There is investment, we have made an investment to that. Around professional culture um, and training, uh, there is substantial increase in PD and coaching for pre-kindergarten teachers. We are adding three new district-wide instructional coaches um, that are primarily going to be math and/or ELA, depending on the, the, the pool. And then we are providing funding for an aspiring school leader, for our aspiring school leader pipelines. So that's what's in the budget. Um, and then we are sustaining critical investments. So I just, one thing I want to point out is I hear all the time that our class sizes are large. I, I, I cannot disagree more uh, when you compare Holyoke to other, not just urbans, certainly more than urbans, but even suburban districts. If you look at here, based on the, based on the uh, projected enrollment for next year, you can see our class size is about 21 for K to 2, almost 22 for 3 to 5, average class size, and 6 to 8, 23 students. High school varies significantly across the board, but we did not change our class size ratios. Um, we are meeting our obligations to staff from a salary standpoint. We are investing in the replacement of Chromebooks and staff devices, which we do annually because they're leased. So there is money in the budget for that again. We are putting a tremendous amount of funding into, around high school redesign, uh, dual enrollment, early college, workforce learning. That is no longer being funded by the state. They expect us to have, if we're gonna continue that, it has to be built in our budget. It is built in the high school budget. We are providing, uh, I already said this before, we are keeping the per pupil allocation the same to schools. The budget does include continued support for the Boys and Girls Club, uh, Play Ball Foundation and Middle School Sports Program that we've had. Um, it does provide support for the CPAC and the LPAC. Um, and then finally, instrumental music partnership. You know that we launched that this year for middle school with community music. The budget does sustain that partnership. These are things that are important to families uh, and the public. And so I just want to make sure that people know that they are part of this budget uh, for next year. Uh, so I'm gonna turn over to Anthony, who's gonna talk about how we got to balance this budget. Um, and then I'll come back to share final thoughts.
Hello, everyone. Um, so some of this, you know, a lot of this information um, may have been presented at the last meeting with, um, when we went to discuss the Student Opportunity Act, but I'd like to just share an overview of- an overview of, of the budget figures. So our revenue for, for the upcoming year is actually going to be going up, um, $5.2 million. That's what, that our net school spending is estimated to go up, and again, Dr. Drake. Um, and I think it's important to continue to reiterate that these numbers are, are completely based on the, uh, governor's budget and, um, you know, we're, we're keeping a close eye and trying to get as much information out of the state as possible. But, um, I, I don't anticipate the state releasing any new information until at least July. So the best we could do was, uh, build our budget based on the governor's budget and hope that, um, what, what ends up, um, finally passing at the state level is consistent with the, the governor's budget. Um, this budget represents the first year of, of the Student Opportunity Act. Um, as you guys all are aware, it's a seven-year implementation. Um, our, as far as enrollment goes, we did experience an increase in enrollment, um, in, in the district. But, uh, overall, the way we get funded is our foundation enrollment, which includes the charter schools. And, um, that, that only went up by 29 students. Our charter reimbursements expected to increase by about 918,000. And, um, in order to, to, to balance this budget and continue with, you know, that Dr. Drake, um, spoke about a lot of the important investments that we want to make for next year. We had to use, uh, we had to offset some of our operating budget with some COVID stimulus funding, um, uh, school choice revolving fund balance, and, uh, anticipating some general fund carryover. Um, given that we're, we have been out of school, we are going to experience some savings and on the general fund for this upcoming year. Now, on the expense side, uh, we, we anticipate that salaries are going to go up about 3.1 million, uh, primarily school-based positions. Um, we do, we are experiencing an increase in, uh, supplies and services. Uh, Dr. Drake mentioned continuing our investment in technology. Um, and, and some of the investments that we made at MedCaf and in the middle school are contributing to that in, uh, increase. Uh, we expect health insurance and retirement costs to go up by about 521,000. And out-of-district tuition, um, is going to be going up on the, on the general fund about $1 million or 23%. Um, our charter tuition costs, part of the Student Opportunity Act, um, whatever we ended up getting in, in Student Opportunity Act money, the charter schools also stood to benefit as well. So we're, we're going to see an increase of 1.4 million, um, based on the governor's cherry sheet. And Dr. Drake mentioned all the critical new investments that we have, so I won't repeat them. You can go to the next slide, Steve. So everything I just talked about is, is on this slide here. You can see our revenue, um, and what the final state budget was this past year. Um, what we were projecting initially, when the governor initially released his budget, um, and after adding investments during the staff allocation and updating all of our assumptions, we were looking at a $5.1 million deficit, and, um, we made some, some reductions. Uh, analyzed all of our, our high-level accounts, like, you know, finally negotiated the health insurance, updated those assumptions. Um, we really scrutinized a lot of the expenses, uh, to get that number down as best we could, and that we were able to get it down to about 3.8 million, which then we were able to offset on the supplemental funding. So this number is a little different, this is what actually the, what will go to city council. Um, it's how our appropriate, how we're appropriated. Um, the, what's different from the slide before is that, um, health insurance and, and a lot of the benefit costs that, that we like to see and, and include in our budget and should be including in our budget when we do any reporting, it actually sits on the city's budget and is backed out of this appropriation. So this is, uh, our appropriation for this upcoming school year, the, uh, to meet net school spending is going to be about nine, $93.9 million, which is an increase of 5.3 million from the previous year. So we did what we do every year, uh, we asked department heads and we asked schools, we, we put together our staff allocation, we asked, we have a very, uh, inclusive budget process, so we involve the principals and, and we give principals a per pupil amount based on the number of students they have, we look at class sizes, we look at projected enrollment, and then we, we engage them in the process and, and allow them to build their spending plans. Uh, we reviewed all funding sources available and realigned resources wherever we could. Um, we were really aggressive when it came to out-of-district, knowing that those costs had spiked up. We're going to be aggressive in making sure that, you know, we try to bring back as many students as we could, uh, while still providing them the level of service that they need. Uh, we adjusted the allocations for enrollment. We reviewed all the high, high-level accounts, like benefits, and realized some savings, and then, uh, again, we used some, some, we strategically looked at all the funding sources to make sure we can continue these, uh, investments and avoid deep cuts. Um, we didn't want to cut any further, um, given that we know that this pandemic is going to have a huge impact on, on students, and we want to make sure that, that we are, we're ready to support them when they come back post, um, coronavirus.
Okay.
Uh,
Oh, was there?
So, yeah.
Kind of lost me there.
I'll go through the, the assumptions real quick, these are really important to note, because if any of these assumptions, um, are, are wrong or, or are off, and by the time we get to the final state budget, it will, it will have an impact on our budget. So, uh, we're, we're making the assumption again that the governor's budget is going to be what ends up sticking. Um, we're making an assumption that the city is going to meet their net school spending obligation. Um, that circuit breaker reimbursements are not going to get cut, that Title I is not going to get cut, that E-rate won't get cut. And that next year enrollment is going to be consistent with what we projected, um, in April. Uh, we're also, you know, anything that happens with utilities, you know, if they were based on April 2020 projections, um, that's a big assumption that we have in our budget. We're also accounting for about $600,000 in, uh, personnel salary loss time. And then that the final state assessments are equal to the governor's budget.
Okay, I know, um, Dr. Drake, you probably wanted to continue on through the budget, but real quickly, I have someone who has a question. Um, so Mr. Shan.
I have multiple questions, so if Dr. Drake wants to go first, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Do you want us to? Yeah, do you want us to finish, Devin, or, or do you want to ask now?
That's up to you.
Yeah, why don't we finish and then we'll take all the questions, is that? Let's do that. All right.
So the, the majority of the district's general fund budget comes from state aid. Uh, about 88% of the budget is state aid, and then the rest of it, about 12% is coming from, um, local, local taxes. Uh, according to the latest data published on DSSY's website, Holyoke is one of the 11 communities in the entire state that's funded either at or below the minimum, um, for those that had completed their end-of-year report in 2019. And on average, across the state, districts are funded about 42% above the net school spending requirement. And this is just kind of to put things into perspective. If, if Holyoke were funded 42% above net school spending, that would be an additional 37 million in our budget. Um, unfortunately, you know, we're not a community that can, um, benefit from being above net school spending, given, given, um, the, the city's finance situation. Uh, fiscal dependency, it, it, again, I, not to be repetitive, this is just a visual of what I just said. Um, because Holyoke is one of the poorest communities in, in the state, we're, uh, number three on the list in terms of how, how heavily reliant we are on state funding. Um, there's other communities out there that have already balanced their budget, you know, they don't really care what happens at the state level, because, um, most of their, their funding comes from local taxes, but Holyoke's not in that situation. You know, we got a lot, majority of our funding from the state, so that's why we keep a close eye on what's going on. This graphic here just breaks down, uh, a dollar and how it's spent in Holyoke Public Schools. So, uh, salaries and wages, um, is the majority of our costs. It says 49% there, but, um, when you factor in fringe benefits, um, it's, and, and you take away like what, what we give to the charter schools and what we pay to out-of-district, um, our budget's about 77% staffing. So it's a very labor-intensive budget. Um, I do want to stress, and I'm sure Steve will talk about it as well, um, later on in the presentation, is that this pandemic is inevitably going to have an impact on our economy. And, you know, uh, speed, listening to what other business managers in the state and what other superintendents are talking about, we, we actually expect there to be some fiscal challenges, um, in the state's ability to be able to, to fund us, um, the, based on what the governor's numbers are, we're hoping that next year is not, um, not bad, but I, you know, all things are pointing to like, there's going to be some, some challenges that we'll face. Um, you know, given that the shutdown has taken so long, and, uh, you know, the state's not realizing as much revenue and the federal government's not realizing as much revenue as initially projected. So we just want to be sure that, that folks are aware that challenging times could be coming as they relate to revenue. Uh, this is a graphic of our, our teacher salaries, you can see that in most years over the lessons 17, we've experienced an increase, and that just goes to show our commitment to, uh, funding teachers. These are, this is another cost, uh, uh, one of our cost drivers, so on average, our healthcare costs continue to go up. So you see that it's, uh, the average plan is going to cost the, the school department about $10,000 per FTE for the upcoming year. Uh, these are our charter trends, a large part of our budget and our increase is the charter assessments, and you can see that every year, for the most part, uh, you see charter tuition going up. Um, and over time, what you would see is that orange bar going down, um, and charter reimbursement going down as, as, you know, um, less kids are, le- less reimbursement is coming into the district. I also have a trend there for enrollment. Um, so we're projecting, based on the governor's numbers, we had the budget for about 840, uh, charter students, but, uh, we did get a pre-enrollment report, uh, not an updated cherry sheet, but a pre-enrollment report was about 776, which is less charter schools, less charter school students than the year before. And another huge cost driver to us is out-of-district tuition. We're looking at spending about 8.7 million for next year on out-of-district, um, tuition. Um, we only get about 1.8 million in chapter 70 revenue and about 2 million in circuit breaker. So we're left with an unfunded, um, an unfunded gap of about 4.8 million as it relates to out-of-district students and tuition costs. Steve, this is, uh, where you can.
Yeah, so let me jump in, uh. Uh, so again, uh, we're going to need 100% of net school spending in addition to some, uh, the 3.8 million and other revenue streams to balance the FY '21 budget. And then I, again, want to just reiterate the impact that COVID-19 could have, not just on the budget for this upcoming year, but in future years to come. I think I'm just, uh, sharing the obvious with people, but I, I want to make sure that's reiterated. Um, on the, before I, I, I don't want to go right to the ne- the negative, but I do want to be transparent about where we would go if we have to make additional cuts. I do just want to say, on the positive side for Holyoke, uh, enrollment has stabilized, if not going, if not actually going in the right direction. We saw an increase of 109 students this year, uh, in our HPS enrollment, that's a good trend. We want to continue to see that. It remains to be seen what the pandemic will do for enrollment, but that's something, um, that we want to continue. And our enrollment is almost about the same as where it was five years ago. Um, and the more we can, you know, o- obviously, the more kids we have, uh, the better financial position we're going to be in. Uh, secondly, it is, uh, interesting to see the charter trend is going, uh, in a favorable direction for us. Um, just looking at the pre, uh, the pre-reports for this coming school year, the pre-enrollment reports. Obviously, that's another trend we want to see, is that the charter numbers go down, that would benefit fiscally the district. Around choice, while we're still seeing a number of kids' choice out, uh, we are also gaining significantly in the number of kids at choice in. Uh, some of it's better record-keeping for sure, but, um, you know, we're clo- you know, I, I believe that we'll be clo- close the gap in terms of revenue going out and, and then revenue coming in. It's still way too high, and our choice numbers obviously impact our fiscal, um, position. In the event that chapter 70 is cut at any point during this upcoming school year, and we may not know that, this until July and August, and, you know, I won't be here, so I want to be transparent with the committee and the public about the conversations that we've had, had, and with the new receiver. The first, uh, unfortunately, the first reductions would be to look at some of the Student Opportunity Act investments. Um, much of the, uh, addition in the budget is around the Student Opportunity Act. And if the governor cuts back the SOA money, the, the items you see there would be the things that would, uh, would need to go, uh, or would be discussed about being cut in, in our reductions. Um, so the other place is to look at class sizes. I, not somewhere we want to go, but the reality is, we could be forced to do that, uh, if there are reductions. And then, you know, also freezing any open positions, we've already begun to take a look at that, and we're not, uh, we, we begun to, um, uh, especially central office positions, but also looking at salary increases, um, and freezing those if need be. That's something as a district, we have to, we're going to have to talk about if the governor comes back and says we're going to cut the budget by 5 or 10%. So I just want to, I know that's sobering, but I also wanted to paint, um, you know, the, uh, the, the real picture here that as a, um, as an economy, as a state, we're certainly struggling. Um, and, um, the outlook i- is, could, could be problematic for not just Holyoke, but every community across the state. And for us, as Anthony pointed out, our funding is such, so dependent on the state, that whatever the governor does, uh, whatever the legislature does is, will have significant impacts here. Um, finally, I'd just say, the budget is tightly aligned with our priorities, our vision, our instructional core, and the commitment to equity, as I talked about earlier. Uh, the majority of these new investments are related to our SOA engagement sessions, going back to slide 11. They are taking into account what the community said, and I think that's a good practice in general, in the future, for budget discussions is to engage the community around what they're looking for. And then finally, HPS has to be ready to pivot quickly, depending on what the state budget revisions and adjustments will be into the summer and into the fall. Um, and then finally, I'm just, this is actually, this is my grandfather's quote, so I just thought I, you know, I'll leave a little, my personal touch, I have a letter that my grandfather wrote to me, Mildred, my Cuban grandfather, um, who is no, no longer with us, um, and I love this quote, it's something I keep on my desk. Uh, if you are to overspend, do so in educating your children, it should say, your children and grandchildren. This is money well spent, no one, not even Fidel Castro, can take away what you've learned. So those are words that I live by, and I, very powerful message, uh, from Gonzalo DoCal, who is my grandfather. He wrote that to me and his other grandchildren in 1994. So with that, I'm sure there's a million questions, thank you for your attention to the presentation.
Oh, we'll go first with, uh, Mr. Shan.
Yeah, so I, I think, first of all, I mean, with the thought that, that we said, if it gets bad, I mean, it's bad. Um, the state is going to potentially lose, what, 4.4 billion in revenues? Um, I mean, we can be optimistic, but it's bad. Um, has, I mean, I, I'm looking at some other, uh, urban districts, and I know some are just following the governor's budget as, as is, uh, because municipal leaders are telling them, I know the DOR doesn't give cities the ability yet to look at a 1/12 budget. But why did we not create, um, two or three budgets? I mean, one that is a, a level-funded budget, maybe one that doesn't include SOA money, I mean, I mean, it just seems, um, I mean, I'm looking towards the future and I can only anticipate that we're also going to have nine C cuts at some point. Um, in it, because revenues are going to be down. I mean, we, looking at the governor's plan and even being the most optimistic you can be, I don't think we can even anticipate a lot of the revenue generating opportunities until at least July first um for the Commonwealth. So I mean, is there a reason why we didn't create more than one budget document just to to actually be ready? I mean, I know we said we are trying to be ready, but why wouldn't we have done one that is just a level service um budget that, I mean, Revere has five different scenarios of budgets that they created. Um, I think Melrose did two budgets. I mean, it it's not unprecedented right now, since we are in unprecedented times, to have those documents ready to actually have a full and transparent look of what's going on.
Yeah, so I mean, Anthony can comment after me. We are, we do, we do have scenarios. Uh, we, as we said, we have a list of items uh that we would uh look at, um, and we, that we've generated. Really, the first, the second budget we have is without S O A funding. Um, we have been instructed, though, to put together our formal budget around the governor's budget. Uh, I actually had a conversation with the commissioner about this today. Um, and especially since there is uh the uh some, the the mitigating funding that could come from stimulus. Uh, he had, he has been clear that, um, you know, while there could be cuts at the state level, there's also the potential for additional resources. Uh, but to your point, Devin, I do think we need to do some more planning around, you know, at least two other scenarios. One would be uh to be very explicit around the S O A, if the S O A is cut. And then, secondly, if there's a cut beyond the S O A, what that would uh, what that would look like for schools. So I I don't think that that's, um, I think there's some, you know, uh, there's some uh sense to what you're saying. Uh, Anthony, I don't know if you want to chime into that, chime in on that as well.
Yeah, I'll I'll just reiterate what you say, what what you're saying. I mean, we have to present a budget to the city council to meet that deadline. It has to be balanced. Um, what you see in front of you is our version of the balanced budget uh based on the governor's numbers, but we do have a blueprint of, as Dr. Zright mentioned, you know, depending on how much revenue, if if at all any revenue is cut out of our budget for next year. We have a menu of things that we need to look at closely. That could be, you know, some of the uh, some of the new investments that we made this year uh or that we're making this upcoming year. That could be class sizes, um, you know, if whatever cuts we end up getting, I'm sure that the char-, you know, the charter tuition will be, you know, one that wouldn't affect us much, but, you know, if that ends up panning out, then that's less money we have to put towards the the charter assessments. But I I don't know that, I don't know that we should go out publicly and pu- publish a a different version of the budget. But as Dr. Zright mentioned, we're, you know, we we're ready. Um, you know, we just don't know how painful it's going to be. And, you know, we've tiered our cuts to these are some, some har- really hard ones to make. These are some, some ones that would go first. And then these are ones that we got to try to stay away from if at all possible, but um, that's out there. I mean, it's it's one that, you know, we went over with Dr. Zright. I'm sure we're going to be going over with the incoming superintendent at some point. Um, but I I feel like that's the approach that we should take is is, you know, push this budget forward. Um, and then, you know, plan and prepare on on, you know, if if cuts were to come, where where do we need to look first?
I think that's somewhat of a false sense of security that we're providing to people if if we aren't planning more and talking about it more. And we, we do not present a budget to the city council. Legally, the mayor sets the number and the city council is to approve that. I didn't see no legal requirement where the Holyoke Public Schools presents a budget. It is a number that we're given through appropriation by the city that meets spending. So all the city, when you look at the city budget, what's in there is our total number. Uh, and as long as we meet that, we are in compliance with that. I don't think that there's anything wrong with having that scenario of multiple budget documents that show that. I think what we've presented tonight simply shows the public that we're basing this off numbers the governor presented in January. And other stuff could happen, we're going to try to fund this, but we may not either. And I think it's a going to be a much more grim conversation, uh, especially if we go out and start recruiting these positions and the money doesn't come through. I mean, I would much rather be much more open about it now than have to serve a number of layoff notices in October when we don't have the money or when the federal government doesn't come through. We have yet to get an answer from the commissioner whether or not the money from the CARES Act is going to be used as supplemental or supplementing. Uh, on that, and the state hasn't really worked that out yet. So I mean, I just think that we are kind of going into this, um, setting ourselves up for failure with the budget.
I'm going to move to people on the telephones, um, Mr. Wellahian.
Oh, hi, thank you. Um, just want to go back to, um, I'm, uh, kind of glad that we're adopting the uh civics courses and the social studies. Um, classes, that's kind of been a lot art over the whole United States for the last twenty years or so. So I'm happy to see that. Um, just like to have someone comment on the, um, probably the, um, the line item regarding uh transportation. Um, whether that might go up, um, next year with the virus situation. There might be more, more buses that are going to be required and less students per bus. Thank you.
Anthony, you want to say?
Yeah, our, our transportation is already projected to go up, um, about five percent. Um, and that's, you know, a regular C P I that's built into the contract, um, based on the number of buses that we have on the road right now. We didn't develop a budget that would require increased bu- busing. Um, we're, you know, I met with the transportation, um, team today and we're developing scenarios for this upcoming school year, which include, you know, with basically like if we were to go back, um, if we were to go back to school in the fall, you know, we're pre- we're uh, we're putting together scenarios on how how we could do it. Um, and while respecting social distancing, we don't know if we're going to be going back, if it's going to be virtual, if it's going to be a mix on a staggered schedule. But if it's going to be a hundred percent, you know, where all students are expected to come back um in the fall. There's, and there's a, there's like specific guidelines around maintaining six feet apart. Um, that would be virtually impossible to do, given this budget. We would have to increase, we would have to increase bus uh busing costs. Um, that, we we can't build a budget based on that, but uh, we're having those conversations. Um, and and but this budget is based on the number of buses that we have on the road right now.
Okay, thank you, yeah, just to kind of go back to what Mr. Mr. Sheen said, you know, it's just, uh, these numbers are put forth, you know, back in the spring, it's just, you know, it's just, uh, that's like late years away right now. You know, just because of the uh, the current um financial situation. So I'm just kind of worried that, um, these numbers might might change a lot. Okay, thank you.
Oh, can I just, there, I mean, there's both the need to, what Devin said, there there's reductions, but the the other issue is there's going to be additions. I mean, depending on the guidance we get about how many kids we can have on vehicles and in schools, I mean, that's the concern, right? There could, I mean, there could be variables that are are going to require us to increase our costs. So this is why is that we have to be nimble uh and be ready to make these adjustments, um, depending on the guidance we get. It's really hard to predict what's going to happen uh between now and the start of school in August.
And I will say that this is consistent with how we develop a budget every single year. I know that the circumstances aren't, aren't, um, are very unique, but we always develop a budget based on a version of the state's budget. It's usually the House's version of the budget, uh, but in this case, the House didn't release their version of the budget. And there's always changes at the state level when they finally release their budget, sometimes in our favor and sometimes not in our favor. Um, thi- this year again is is obviously unique in that we're expecting to see reductions um at the state level and federal level, but this is consistent with what we've done in the past.
And what about Ms. Rosalie Tensley Williams? Do you have a comment or question?
Yes, ma'am. Um, this question is for Mrs. Soto. Um, the charter school money, um, do we actually get reimbursed? I know at one point in time, there was a question about that and, um, are we actually being reimbursed by them?
We are, um, it hasn't been fully funded historically, and I know that as part of the Student Opportunity Act, the plan is to, um, to fully fund that reimbursement. Uh, we're proj- the governor's cherry sheet has us getting about one point nine million dollars in in charter tuition reimbursement for next year. Um, I think the issue that you're bringing up is that historically, they have a formula that says that, you know, they're they're supposed to give us X amount. And they typically give us right around sixty-five percent of what they're supposed to be giving us. Um, and that's been consistent for like the last ten years. We were hopeful when they came out with the Student Opportunity Act because it it addressed some of that, but, um, we don't know what's going to happen with that either, so.
Um, you said the one.
Right now, what we have is one, one point nine million in the, and we're counting on for charter reimbursement funds.
The circuit breaker, what was that amount you said? What was that percent of the circuit breaker?
So that was charter reimbursement that I was talking about, but our circuit breaker, we get about two million dollars. And that's for any student that we spend more than four times the per pupil rate. So the per pupil rate, um, is about fourteen thousand dollars, fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty-three. So we go through a process. If we spend more than, four times that amount on any of our special ed students, um, the difference between that number and what we actually spent, we get reimbursed at about seventy-two percent. Um, and that happened to be about two million dollars this year. So some of our students, you know, especially those that are in residential placements, uh, we, you know, we only, we're only getting fourteen thousand five hundred, but we end up paying for that student to attend over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a residential placement. Uh, the circuit breaker program is for those particular students. They, uh, we get a a portion of that reimbursed to the district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Dr. Drake, Mr. Soto, thank you guys, um, for your presentation. I don't see anybody else with any questions. I do know that on June fifteenth, though, um, we are scheduled for the public hearing on the budget at five thirty and then followed by the school committee meeting discussing the budget. So we might have more answers then, we might not. I mean, you say something new each minute, something new, so, thank you.
So Mildred.
Oh, go ahead.
How are we, um, is the the complete and full budget going to be online soon so that we can direct the public to review that? Because our, the requirement of the budget hearing is that the full budget is fully available to the public for review. So when is that going to, when is the full budget document of the Holy Public Schools? I think it's, is it fifteen days, Liz?
That's to be posted by the first, right?
So we have to advertise in the newspaper seven days before the public hearing.
Seven.
And and the budget has to be available at least forty-eight hours before that public hearing.
I thought it had to be available prior for the public to be able to view it.
Forty-eight hours.
Okay, so that'll be going online on that Thursday?
Well, we hope to do, we hope to do it before then, but yeah, no later than that.
And then what will be the process for, I mean, that is a narrower time then for soliciting public comment, right? So how are we, what's the process for that?
Process for what?
So the budget hearing is a hearing for the public to publicly comment on our budget. So what process are we employing to solicit public feedback on the budget?
It would be the same as what we're asking for them right now, that if they have any comments, um, to bring up on any agenda item, that they do so by submitting their questions or their comments to Ms. LaFond the Monday of the meeting, so like today, by three P M. So they have ample time to submit their questions, um, just in case that we're not able to do it in purpose, in person. But they are, they are encouraged to send their their comments.
Okay, so most of that will be, that'll be, do the public notices need to be done differently for the newspaper, Liz, to explain that? Since typically it's just saying, appear at the school department main office?
I'm not even a hundred percent sure that the guidance on holding public hearings is crystal clear yet. I've been trying to follow that, so there might be some, that might be a bit different. So yes, we will have to state it in the ad.
Okay, and are we able to translate the budget this year?
Uh, we can trans, I think we would be able to translate the uh, the the portions that are the nar- as much of the narrative as we can, yes. I mean, we'd have to, we we have much more capacity to do that, so we could. Uh, it might not be, it might not be every page, but a substantial part of it we could.
Well, I think it should be one or the other. I mean, if we're publishing one, it should either be.
Well, many of the pages are numbers, so I'm just saying.
Okay, obviously, numbers are are numbers, but I mean, it shouldn't be a, a this or the, if we're going to translate it, it shouldn't be a choice, it should be what's up there.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, I think we can look at that. We have a, we actually have much more capacity now than we normally do, because I, uh, the state is providing UMass translation services to the district for free right now. So we now, we can actually do that.
Okay.
We just need to get it to them soon, sooner.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Yeah, so I just, uh, I guess it's just my comments. Uh, I I'm not going to read through my updates, I just want to highlight a couple of things. Uh, I did mention the Med Cap expansion. We do have an agreement in place to lease the former B S building. We just need to finalize the safety. Uh, the building department needs to make sure the building is safe for for use, but we don't anticipate any obstacles to that. Um, I did want to also just mention that I sent you an email today regarding the new principal at McMahon School, Rebecca Thompson, who will start July first, but she's already engaged in, um, uh, transition convers- conversations with Noreen York. Um, I I'd really like to be able to honor Ms. York before he leaves. She's given tremendous dedication and commitment to this district for a long time. Um, and so, um, you did get a note about, uh, that, um, selection. And I also just want to take a moment to, um, you know, just pay the, our respects to the the families that, not pay our respects, but to acknowledge the families that were affected by the microburst on Friday night. Um, a tragic situation, but I'm really appreciative of the way that our staff has stepped up to support the families. We had devices there today at the hotels to give families. Um, we have, we have food being delivered to both hotels where families are. I want to thank Jose Bo and Mario, um, for their work in coordinating also the uh mental health supports for families as well. And I think our counselors, our principals, uh, have been fantastic. I originally had told you that it was just a handful of students, I was erroneous. It's forty-four, at least forty-four, I think it's up higher now, uh, Jose, we're closer to fifty students who were affected by this across multiple schools um, in the the apartment complexes. Um, but we are in regular communication and our staff has done, I think, a great job in 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 getting our families what they need. There was a flyer that went out with the donations that H P S is, uh, collecting. Um, so I just want to acknowledge that and that, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Jose, but, uh, those are my comments.
Yeah, there's just been an overwhelming response and we're appreciative of of the city's response, um, to these families.
Um, I'll stop there, any questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Tensley Williams.
Um, besides auto accidents, another leading cause of death in our teenagers in America is suicide. Um, this is a tough time for all of us, uh, depression, distress, especially now. And if anyone. And if anyone out there is aware of anyone that's feeling overwhelmed. There's a number that they can call, 1-800-273-8255. It's confidential, it's twenty-four hours, it's free. And if they just want to talk, they can go ahead and talk. And I just want you guys to know that I'm really praying for this pandemic to be over. You guys have a good night and I'm happy to hear your voices.
Thank you, Rosalie. Was that, was that all you were providing from all the other stuff that was in here? Dr. Drake?
Well, you, are you disappointed with my update? I mean, did you want more? I, I did, uh.
I mean, you missed two things that I think are really important.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and one is the reentry planning update.
Oh, yes, yes.
That's number one.
Yes.
And, um, I know that, um, there was a request for at least one school committee member to be part of the reentry planning. So to all the school committee members, um, if anyone is interested in, um. Being, um, part, a part of the reentry planning updates, please send me an email. Um, and I'll see the interest and then appoint someone, um, to be on that along with Dr. Drake. Um, so that's number one.
Yes, so thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I was remiss in that. Can I just comment on that? We are, we would appreciate, one of the committee members had the suggestion. We would appreciate having a committee member be part of it. The meetings are Thursday afternoon. Um, it's a Zoom call from 1:00 to 2:30. Is that right, Erin? Um, and, um, yes, if anybody, please let Mildred know and we'll make a decision on who to include. Uh, but we are in full effect right now, meeting. The first meeting was Thursday. Uh, Erin is leading that work, uh, doing, I think, a, a, a strong job, given that, that parameters changed by the minute. Um, and we are going to be providing regular updates to, uh, constituents, including the public. There was that email that was sent out today. Uh, our plan is to regularly communicate what we're talking about, so nobody's surprised. Uh, or thinks that we are, um, or, you know, is unsure about what's being discussed. Uh, we have good representation from teachers. We have a par rep. We have school leaders, different departments. So, um, it would be great to have a school committee member present.
And I did see a hand for Ms. Burks. Ms. Burks, do you have a comment? Or a question? Ms. Burks?
Actually, yes, I did. Um, well, I'm hoping Dr. Drake is still gonna touch upon. The new receiver coming in.
Oh, we weren't there yet.
In that transition.
We weren't there yet. I thought you had a comment on the re.
Okay, and then one other thing. Um, I want to just say thank you to Dr. Okay. Hang on one second. I also want to say thank you to Dr. Drake. Um, and also to Anthony for making sure that even though the building, um. Dana Kelly was contaminated, um, for setting up to have food still delivered to families so that they didn't have to trip back and forth to Morgan. Um, I thought that that was really important. It was set up really fast. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledged. The YouTube work pretty quick to make sure that it happened, so it wasn't disruption for family.
Yeah, thank you. I give Anthony all the credit and his team and, uh, for that. So thank you for acknowledging that.
So, um, and then it was the transition with the new receiver.
Yep, um, was that on here too?
It did, yeah.
Okay. So, uh, first of all, Mildred had asked me, which I thought was a good idea, to invite the new receiver to the next meeting. Uh, which I will do, or will, or Mildred will do that, but I thought that was a good idea, first of all. Um, and we did, uh, the new receiver, Dr. Vasquez and I did meet. Um, last, a week ago Friday, we spent the afternoon together. He has also been a part of a number of meetings. This past week. He was part of the summer school, uh, to, uh, group that Val is leading around, um, real, uh, our summer school plan. He was also part of the reentry meeting. He also met with the teacher advisory group last week. Uh, so he spent the bulk of Thursday, uh, in district, which means a virtual at this point, in meetings. Um, and I, I think he, he now has a HPS email address, which I will make sure you all have. Uh, if you'd like to, uh, invite him to different, uh, things. Um, I, I can't speak for his schedule. We did text today. We are going to set, uh, set up another time for him and I to just have a longer period of time. Uh, we're trying to do that at least once a week where we can talk for two to three hours around the transition. But he is interested in participating in meetings, particularly around the budget. Uh, reentry, summer school, and then our instructional conversations. Um, but I will, I will send you his email, uh, before I close up here for the night so that you can, you'd like to invite him to anything. Um, you certainly can reach out, or would like to reach out to him, you can certainly do that via email.
Well, yeah, so we definitely would like to have him be a part of our meeting in June, plus, um, I just want to give everybody a heads up. Come July, we. We will be having a meeting this year in July. Um, with everything that's been going on, I don't think it's. Good for us to stop at any given time, especially since things are changing, like I said, very rapidly. One minute it's one thing. The next minute it's another. Um. So with that being said, um, anybody else have any comments? Questions? Not that I see any hands up on this board screen. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to new business. Um, minutes of, uh, of the regular meeting of April twenty-seventh. Is there a motion for this? Is there a second?
Second.
So Mr. Sheen, um, put in the motion seconded by Rain. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Roll call, that's right. Roll call is, thanks Devin, you always got me. Oh, the mayor's not here, right?
Correct.
Ms. Drake?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Feliciano Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Wellahad?
Yes.
I think Mr. Collmore has left us. Mr. Kushein?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so motion passes unanimously. Any ongoing business? I don't see any in here. Uh, any announcement now? No? Oh, Mr. Sheen, sorry. I was looking at the right hand.
Yeah, just, um, want to remind people that tomorrow is election day. If you didn't have the opportunity to. Um, vote absentee. Um, or vote early through the city clerk's office. Polls are open in, uh, Holyoke. And, um, that the. There are, have been some changes in polling places. You can look on the city clerk's website or call them if you have any questions regarding that. But polls are open, I believe, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Uh, and don't forget to, uh, social distance and use your own personal protection equipment and, uh, go and, uh, vote.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Burks?
I just want to give a shout out to all the students that performed in the talent show. It was absolutely amazing. Mr. Todd, um, Ms. Brunel, there were, there were quite a few people that were actively involved in that, but. I mean, the judges were hilarious, but the kids were just phenomenal. Um, and I'd really, you know, congratulations to each one of them because the talent was so raw and so beautiful. And it was a great showcase of our students.
Great, and I see that Ms. Rosalie Tensley-Williams looks like she wants to say something because she's off mute. Now she's on mute. Okay.
No, I'm off.
Okay, you're off.
Thank you, hon, I'm off set.
Oh, okay, thank you. Ms. Williams, Dr. Drake?
I just want to thank, uh, Ms. Burks. Uh, I, she has been a force around the, uh, uh, recognizing our seniors. Um, uh, to, you know, I, I've never seen, um, a, the, the kind of force that she's brought around recognizing our seniors and she's been. Everywhere doing everything, working with Dr. Mahoney and trying to make sure they get the, the recognition and celebration they deserve. So I want to thank Ms. Burks because. She's honoring the students in the way they should be, and if it wasn't for her, you know, um, I think they'd be recognized, but, but, uh. It is extra special.
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Burks. And snap, snaps. Um, also a reminder, let's not forget about, um, the Rising Stars this year, June second.
Yes, and Friday is the future, uh, teacher signing day. You got an, I think you got a note about that as well. It's in, well, it's in your, uh. It's in your. I, I'll send another reminder, or Liz, maybe you could send a reminder of that. Uh, it's at 11:00 AM on Friday. We have, uh, is it sixth or five students that are. Uh, we have, that are, uh, signing their intent to be teachers. We're doing it virtually on Friday.
Ooh, great. What time? Are you going to send it to us?
It's 11:00, 11:00 AM on Friday.
Well, again, everyone, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, there's a motion. I say that we adjourn.
Okay, so I need a second.
A second.
So motion by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Wellahan. All those in favor, roll call, please.
Roll call, Ms. LaFaye.
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Hey.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Feliciano Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Wellahad?
Yes.
Mr. Kushein?
Yes.
Thank you. So that unanimously, we will go ahead and adjourn 8:33. Thank you, everyone. Remember, stay safe, stay protected.